I would like to thank colleagues in order and I'd like to stand to do a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our tradition, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we'd like to ask for an approval of the agenda.
President, Chance, before you ask for approval, if there's a possibility, we could add two items to the agenda for action items. One, if we could add G four on the agenda to ask the board to approve the transportation collective bargaining agreement that was discussed at our last work session. We failed to approve that and they have, I'll let Mrs. Armstrong, and if we could add it as an action item under G four, that's a request. And also one more after conversations at length with our legal counsel. During the closed session, if it warrants the board to come out of closed session after the closed session and take action on the discussion, we ask that we add an item which would be J on here for potential recommendation for the board to take action. And that would be, we'll discuss that in closed session, but if we need to, it'd be nice to have it on the agenda. Worst case scenario, there is no recommendation or about the motion failed. So those are two requests to add to the agenda.
Okay, I think that Dr. Van Jack said that out this afternoon, so we're heads up on that. So we have a motion to approve the agenda with those additions.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda with the administration.
Okay, Ken and John, supporting. Any discussion? Any votes in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Recognition of visitors based on the fact that no one is here. No one has, is asked to speak, so we will go on to the next. And the truth in taxation budget meeting. And there's going to be another opportunity for public comment also.
So turn order, Mr. Briggs. I can try to get this up and right, copy that.
I think we can, they got it in our handout. We'll discuss it then. That's okay with you?
It is, I just don't know why that's not connected. Come on, we have our presentation.
Somebody must have unplugged H D, H D my one, that's where.
That is correct.
I know where the H D M cord is. Would you like me to grab it?
Or you want to just follow it? If you can, that'd be great. Because I can connect it. You can start, but then we'll.
Sure. Well, thank you, everyone. If you would go to our agenda. Page two. And then our three is our table of contents. Slide four. We need to cover, just for statutory things, we need to cover three big things tonight. The big ideas here. We need to cover the tax rates. We need to cover, we need to discuss the losses. We have to discuss the tax rates. We have to, as far as the general fund appropriation, we have to discuss the revised current budget and discuss the revised next year budget. So those are the three big things. I'll go through lots of other slides, but those are, as action goes and discussion goes, those are things that are required by the uniform budgeting. So if we could start on, in your packet, page four. The big, the big things there, you'll notice that. Yes, good. So you'll notice that we have exceeded our original revenue projection for local revenue by $500,000. That is because when we projected revenue, interest revenue for this year, we expected rate cuts. Those didn't happen in this fiscal year. So that's literally, it's interest revenues the difference. Other lines, the difference between the original budget and the amended budget. If you get into this, where it says expenditures, those first two major categories there. Basic instruction, instruction and added needs. We, in our original budget, we projected a higher amount for retirement. And those are our, that's where most of our classroom, that's where our classroom teachers are, our special education teachers and our instructional aides. That's, those are the two categories that are in. So that is the reason for that difference. In another big change, I'll talk about the big changes. Under Supporting Services line there, that $605,000 variance between the original budget. This is going to become a bigger deal because it's required, it's going to be required, requiring more exposure and conversation in the audit. We'll spend a little more time on this than I normally would be here. That $605,000 difference for people support services, when we prepared the original budget, we weren't, let's just say, we didn't have all the pieces put in place for bringing the auto opportunity schools network staff back in our payroll. They were, previously that program was run by the ISD and they used the payroll as people through the night way. So we brought them back in our payroll. That's $400,000, that difference. And then we just had a lot of staff that we nursing, we took from contracts to employment, it's P T O Ts we took from contracts to employment. A lot of good work that we did, but that's the reason for the difference. And those are the big, those are the big action things. This, if you get down here to near the bottom where it says net change in fund balance, that's one of the required items we have to look at. We started with a more conservative original budget of $2.8 million deficit. Like I said, we had a lot of that's retirement rate. State aid act was not done last year either. That ended up being more one-time money, but more favorable. We didn't get it in the foundation allowance, but this year we're closing our original projection, or our revised projections, $288,000. And we're at least going to be, we're at least going to close a half million dollars positive. So. That's the revised 24, 25 general fund budget. If we flip to the next slide, the original budget, yes, the original budget for 25, 26. You notice on here that we have, and this is some required disclosures too, we have actual expenses for 23, actual expenses for 24. This year's current proposed revise from the prior slide rolls into this column. And then we have the original budget proposed for next year. Notice some differences. We don't have an approved state aid budget this year. We also had the largest class in Hudsonville's history graduate, so we projected 60 less students. I mean, we have just a little smaller classes on both sides of that big class anyways. So we projected 60 less students. It's really not normal to see federal revenue go down by 20%. However, this, in this budget, we had the carryover of that big 11th grant last year, and we had a massive summer school program. It's almost a half million dollars that we had to spend. It was, it was required we spent it. We had to get it done. And then the H R A program was ended by executive order. So that's $600,000. So the other big changes. We, we have, if you look on the basic instruction line here for under instruction, it's, it's only a one, a 0.1% increase. And most of that, most of that's teachers. We had, the teacher's got a 4% raise. But with rightsizing and just moving students' bubble sections, a lot of times bubble sections, we've had a reduction of seven general ed F T Es in the teaching staff. So that went up. Staff got a raise, staff raise, some insurance raises, and there's the decrease in the numbers of staff. That line would be more, like the added needs line there is more normal for what, we would have had an increase because they have the reductions there.
Can I also comment that when retirees, years of experience in their salary structure, it's definitely going to be higher. And also.
And the other big swing you see there is in the instructional support services line. That is where the P B I S and M T S S staff work. So with that, we hired, we have, we had a 6.8 overall reduction with that restructuring. Those are the big changes. We put a little more money in this year in operations and maintenance. That's not normally up by five and a half percent, but we put a little more money in there for utilities. We've got some contracts we still haven't locked in yet, so we just budgeted conservative. But with a conservative revenue budget and a conservative expense budget, conservative both ways. Let's say low on revenue and high in expense. We, we have projected in this budget, in original appropriation, to actually spend $5.8 million of fund balance. We won't, we don't believe it'll be there. We believe we're very conservative on expense. And at some point, the state will do something. We don't know, we don't know what they're going to do with, with the state aid act. We truly don't. But we didn't budget, it's just the Senate's proposal and the governor's proposal, we were finna wrap this up last week. We had a 392 to 200 and we budgeted $300. So as an increase in foundation.
Good. I had, at the opportunity of a conversation, I had, and with Dr. Van Jack this afternoon about the budget. Now, Ken, have you had any, looked at this and have you have questions?
Nope. The biggest, the biggest unknown is the state. I mean, that's everything, there's presentations, but the state budget is. And I don't recall, I wouldn't say never, but it's been a while since I've seen the state budget. It's been this up in the air recently.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Since they started the policy, can't get it done by July or so, maybe 10 years ago.
The question I did have is more of a general question. When you're looking at the fund balance, it was good to see that our fund balance as of the revised budget last year was higher than expected. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ken, that number seems to be much more comfortable than maybe it was 10 years ago. It always seems like we had a real tight number that we weren't even sure if we're going to have to borrow money to make that first payment. Is that because of your work in making a conservative budget? Or is it just the way the revenue has come in? I mean, I'm sure it's a bunch of factors. But, you know, it used to be a 10% was kind of the number, that was a minimal number, right? Tell me about how other districts are sitting, because I feel this is very comfortable for us.
So we've got a slide that'll be in the audit presentation where we ask them to compare it to other area schools. And overall fund balances have increased. But we're doing, we're, I, I think Hudsonville is outperforming. And some of it, some of it has to do with our size, our, I'd like to think some of it has to do with our management performance. But it's, but it's a lot of things. Yeah, it's, it's, it's a lot of things, but we have, we have a great team and I think Hudsonville is more one of the, one of the sorbals is conservative budgeting. So.
And we're continuing to grow, which for a while there, there was that question, please, what's happening around the state? That growth ends up meaning plus more of a conservative time. And tell me how to build.
Yeah, the federal funds, I think we're still sorting through COVID funding, but that's, who knows, in five years it'll be that number 10.4% or so. Right, that's, that skewed a lot of things.
But districts are.
But I do agree with you. It's, 10% was always the lower threshold in most some districts. I wanted to, and we always make sure that that one, which automotive is so separate. You've got to be prepared for down. It affects general, it affects revenue, a couple of states.
With the fundamentals of Hudsonville's lower tax base relative to other schools our size. And 10% is a, some schools can do a 5% because they just have a bigger tax base. And when you're more dependent on the state aid, those kinds between payments become more important.
I think now that we have 400,000 homes that are black up here, which used to be 100,000 other homes where.
It's definitely helped. I mean, it's, the tax, yeah, our tax value is going up, it's definitely helped.
Then it stops getting removed. And also, Andrew, do you have any questions?
No.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, you're welcome. And I'll just go through some other slides quickly and then we'll, we'll stop on the on the tax rates. So this is just a historical thing. Our, for the W C E P fund, that actually is a separate fund. So. Sinking fund, the, what's in, what's in the four or five column is pretty much the actual. The biggest piece there is what we've done with the central kitchen work over here. We're doing that through the, through the sinking fund and then Genesund is reimbursing, reimburses for all but the roof. They can't, some reason, the state told us, told Mary that they can't pay for a roof. So. And then there's just the contingency budget over here. If something happens, if something happens, if something happens, if we get, buy some land, buy some homes, or we need to do some boilers, that's just sets the district up for that's appropriated. But we don't plan to spend $2.6 million with the sinking fund next year. Next, please.
That's, we can't say thank you enough to our community for.
Oh, yeah, that's sinking.
It is huge.
It is.
Remind your constituents, thank you, thank you.
Extremely supportive, yes. And this just falls out to, this, the debt service fund is really, that's where we collect the taxes, pay the bonds and make the bond payments. Pretty cut and dry. Next year, those are lots of bond payments for payments. So. Next. These is to the fine work of Rebecca's Fabiano and Ben Somer. We have a very healthy community, this is our community ed fund, so the early childhood programs, latchkey programs, and our community service, community ed programs are through here. We're fortunate to have over a billion dollars in equity. And those, we really, this really bumped up during COVID with extra funding for the early childhood programs. Now, they're going to do a little bit of spending on. Next slide, please. Pull that up. Yep, that was up there. Okay, so this is the, this is the fund that handles the, we're required to have a separate fund for the food service program and early.
At early childhood.
Next. This is just a memo, a report that shows the Genesund Hudsonville food service program budget. We don't really do anything of this other than it's for Genesund to fiscalize. Just here for information.
This is also a budget that passed in that review with Genesund, their administration and their, every two months we meet to see where we're going to budget and talk about all this, all of these line items that are necessary.
So this is another required element of the, of the hearing. Our recommendation is to levy the full 18 mils of, in the general fund against non-home set properties. Our building site sinking mileage is roll back to 9.93 mils. That's levied against all property. In the debt service tax, Hudsonville has levied seven mils for many years. That's the minimum amount that needs to be levied to be in the school bond loan fund. And that's again against all taxes. And that concludes the required elements and hearing elements of the presentation.
So there's one more slide, but that comes up in the action item that's in a few minutes. So we'll ask at this point, does the board have any questions regarding the review and the truth in taxation that Mr. Briggs has presented? Okay. I will now open it up for public input, but there is an opportunity for the public that has not signed up for public input. I'm going to turn it over and ask Dana, do you have anything you want to say? You're the only one here. Do you love the good one?
Can I just?
Can I, do I use that as a comment or not?
No.
If that's okay, I'll leave it up.
I think we should.
Can I just thank the, thank you people?
Yeah, please.
So I'd just like to thank the, the business office, especially Jody and Stacy for their hard work and pulling all these details together. They're, they're phenomenal. And then so many people in central office, Amy and her staff, Manny and her staff, and just, and getting things to us. Doug's leadership, the, at Cabinet, we really, I mean, that's be my first answer of why we have a good fund balance. It's just, it's, we've got a great team top to bottom and bottom side horizontal. And they, they work hard and they, they're good. So thanks all for your help.
Good job, Pat.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we'll go on to the consent agenda. And approval of minutes from our last meeting. We have a motion to approve the, the consent of the minutes from our last meeting.
Some of them.
All right.
Smart.
Andrew, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, then we're going to go to the regular action items. And the first point will be the 2024, 2025 budget revisions. And we've heard the recommendation. Do we have a motion?
Some of them.
John, do we have a second? Ken, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Then we have the 25, 26 original budgets and we've heard the recommendation. Do we have a motion on that? Ken, do we have a second?
Support.
Andrew, any discussion? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then we have the tax rates for summer of 2025.
That's that last slide in your packet.
And we've heard the recommendations on that. Do we have a motion? Ken? John, seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And then the transportation review. And we had that recommendation at our last meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
Support.
All right, do we have a second?
Let's support. Harv is first.
Ken, okay, any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I will note that thanks to Mrs. Armstrong, the work on the transportation review and Mr. Briggs, but they did ratify their version of, their amendment, so the last step was for the board to approve it. So thank you for approving that. Thanks for all of your, all of your input and, and Rattle also. I know it's not very.
And the transportation.
Leadership.
Leadership.
Yeah.
And now we will go to the discussion items, and the first one is the sex education advisory board.
I'll take that one. So attachment number six in your board packet starts on page 25, 3, I believe, for you. What you'll see on that particular attachment first is the program evaluation. So every two years we will be coming to and presenting our overall program outcomes. And that's what you see here in the document. So there's several courses that we offer under the umbrella of reproductive health, our health education. And the first is, on this document, is the data from the 24 and 25 school leader for our family health class. By way of reminder, that's the elective course that juniors and seniors have the opportunity to take. And you can see that that course is broken down, connected to outcomes into specific I can statements, if you will. So those specific objectives that teachers are hoping to increase knowledge and skill around. And those are the averages of the courses throughout the entire year, how our students perform. And so that shows some evidence of definitely gaining some knowledge in, in these particular areas. As you can see from that family health class data. Moving into general health class, this is the class that the majority of our ninth graders take. And again, really specific to the outcomes, increasing knowledge in these areas. Our students are performing well. Moving on to middle school, this is not broken down any further. We did have some discussion around that, whether we should break down the specific objectives of each of the test areas. So puberty, anatomy, HIV, STIs, for example. But because students are, are doing so well, I suppose if those numbers were, looked a little bit different, we may dig in a little further to see what are, what are the missing knowledge and skills pieces. But as you can see, our students are performing well with gaining knowledge in those areas as well. At the elementary level, we do not test students on their HIV or puberty. It's more just a participation overall. But we do track data there with regard to opt-out data. And you can see that we're gathering two years of data at the elementary level for both fourth and fifth grade. Middle school as well as then both the required health class at the high school. And then, as you'll notice, the family health elective class because students are opting into that. That makes sense that that's a 0% opt-out for that class. So that's high level. Any questions about that set of data?
I think it was kind of interesting that the data for the fourth and fifth grade HIV AIDS statistics changed from one year to the other at the fifth grade level. Is the material significantly different between the fourth and the fifth grade?
It's not. So I'm not sure what, what the why behind that is. I think that as we dig into that data, sometimes it also is building specific. So it could be just communication that's happening that is encouraging parents to feel more comfortable with opting their child out, so to say. So.
The five, six building could impact the change in last time when the kids are, you know, they're active in the fall. What, what does that look like? You know, the five, six building had one side of the campus, one side of the district for one year.
Yeah. So by way of connection, we also pay attention to our youth assessment survey data. That's the risk behaviors. So oftentimes what we're hoping to see is an increase in knowledge around these topics and then a decrease in the risk behaviors. And so that, that youth assessment survey data is also a part of what we're looking at as a sex ed advisory board with any considerations for changes to programming or taking a look at, do we see an increase in students' risk behavior or a decrease in, and that overall data, to speak generally about that, it is posted on our website. Shared that data with you this past year. And we are seeing some decreases in some of the risk behaviors. So that's going to be a step. Any questions about the program evaluation? So moving on to the next attachment, attachment number six. That's really the M D E sex ed survey responses. And we're just finished up our third year. So you can see that there's some trend data, which is nice to start to be able to draw any correlations. I won't go over each set of data, but I will share. I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about any of the data that you might see in front of you. However, if you just give it a glance, we, the sex ed advisory board looked at it more carefully. There doesn't seem to be any particular question that has significantly, a significant data point that we need to be tending to with regard to parents' perspective on when items should be taught or whether it should be taught in school or not taught in school. The items on the final page of the document that I will draw your attention to. Keep in mind, the questions are asked, but just because the question is asked does not mean we teach it within our curriculum. Um, keep in mind, the questions are asked, but just because the question is asked does not mean we teach it within our curriculum. So there are a couple of items that were new questions. You can see on page seven of that attachment, the twenty three, twenty four. Those were two, those two final questions on there. Uh, those are not items that we currently teach within our curriculum. And you can see that the, uh, desire for these items to not be taught in school are high. And so, or higher certainly than many of the other content areas. So I wanted to draw that to your attention, that those are items that we do not currently teach within our reproductive health curriculum. Any questions, no, any of that? No statistically significant data points, other than maybe those, the last two that I, I wanted to draw your attention to. This will be updated on our website. The two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty three data is currently posted. Um, after our review this evening, the sex ed advisory board has reviewed it. After your review this evening, all of our, uh, sex ed advisory board items on our website will be updated, and this is one of the items as well.
You know, one of the things, Amy, that I was looking at was talking about abstinence. And, um, at what level should information about abstinence be taught? It's very interesting, at least to me, in twenty eighteen, only sixty-four percent of the respondents thought that should be taught in high school. But that's up to, uh, eighty percent. Now, I mean, any?
Hunches about that?
Yeah.
I, I don't. I don't have any hunches about that. I think, um, overall, I think when we talk about parent engagement, um, that's also something that we want to focus on. So there are lessons specific to ensuring that parents are having conversations with their students. It's a homework assignment, um, for, for an example. And so I, I don't know how that might connect here, but I guess it would certainly be sort of supported with the idea that we want parents engaged in those conversations as well. Um, and building their comfortability with having the conversations. So maybe their increased knowledge, uh, through the years has also supported their belief that those are conversations that should be happening.
Do we know, Amy, that the percentage of, um, surveys returned in twenty eighteen was five hundred and fifty-four responses? Had better response in twenty twenty-three, but even twenty twenty-five, it's literally doubled what we had in twenty eighteen. I'm just wondering what the rate of return was. Do we know that?
I don't know, other than the numbers that you have in front of you, yeah.
The two things, technology has allowed us to get surveys to kids and it usually, you know, one-to-one, we were not one-to-one in two thousand and eighteen. So maybe filling these out from a student standpoint is a little easier to do than it was with, you know, go home and do this or?
This data is specific, okay?
This is like a, yeah.
Yeah. But to your point, I think in two thousand and eighteen, I personally, I guess, using that, that thinking, I was a lot less savvy at filling out a survey on my phone. I think technology has enhanced even a short period of time that I can fill the survey out on my phone real easily, um, versus on a computer. So maybe that has increased some of that as well.
What's the number of families that we say we typically have overall?
It's about, well, it's about fourteen, well, about fourteen thousand that we try to handle. About seven thousand kids, I think, two parents per child, about fourteen. With the duplicates and everything, we spread it around eleven.
I think there's a number of families that we try to capture, I don't know, but overall.
Maybe on the, on that first page at the bottom, where it talks about at what level should information about reproductive anatomy be taught? Highest percentage over the years has always been middle school. So are people, do you think people, when they start taking the survey and interpreting, there's like, it's like one-only kind of thing?
No, so you'll see that the data is, is higher than a hundred percent families.
That's why.
You can, you can choose multiple grade levels. So some families might be selecting elementary, middle school, and high school.
Right. Okay. So it's interesting to me that people would want to talk in middle school, but not in high school?
And there could be some that select middle school, thinking that, uh, middle school, I'm worried about middle school.
That's, that's where else again.
Yeah.
So then what key takeaways in terms of how these data will be used, kind of going forward?
Yeah, I, I think, um, some of the uses of this data, so we'll move into membership next. So the data is used, um, both for the sex ed advisory board to consider topics that should be taught or should we be teaching something in a different way, again, trying to track what our larger community believes. And then the second piece is tied into membership. And so ensuring that we're building a sex ed advisory board that's representative of those, uh, the data points that are listed here and when families believe these items should be taught, trying to build that, that similar representative sample, if you will, with, uh, within the sex ed advisory board. I think that when we look at overall the pieces of data that we track, um, one is the health assessment data, which I just went over. It's certainly what our, uh, parents are wanting and thinking and what their views are about when items should be taught. And then that, the, um, third part of the data is really the assessment survey data, uh, which we will be administering again this fall and, and continuing to, uh, track and monitor risk behaviors and connecting as much as we possibly can to any of the education we might be providing within our health education. Any other questions about that? Moving on to membership, so, um, that was a perfect segue. Thank you for doing it. Um, by way of membership, you can see in the final attachment, uh, on page thirty-one is a draft sex ed advisory board, uh, members list. These items, you'll see there are individuals in bold that are, uh, recommendations from the sex ed advisory board to be added to the list. There are six parents, one administrator, and one additional teacher. Uh, the process that was outlined previously, uh, with you was followed by a subcommittee of the sex ed advisory board. A rubric is used, looking specifically at, uh, not only how they responded to questions on the MDE survey and how that correlates to the overall MDE survey respondents, um, but also with regard to, uh, really representative sample across the district. So you'll notice on the list, we work to get representative, uh, representatives from each of our buildings at elementary, middle school, and high school. Um, there are also some obligations legally about who needs to be on the sex ed advisory board. Um, for example, clergy, we need to have clergy on the sex ed advisory board. We need to have health professionals on the sex ed advisory board. So, uh, we just follow a process of looking at what buildings do we need? Oh, gosh, someone who's coming off of the committee is leaving from Riley. What does the other representation look like from Riley Middle School? Okay, we need a Riley Middle School parent. Let's start there. And then let's look at the data and let's drill back further. What about professionals? We need another clergy. We need a nurse. We need, um, to kind of just align all of those criteria, um, is really the selection process. And then this was presented to the sex ed advisory board in May, and they approved for a recommendation to you.
So the, so, just real quick, the, the community representatives. So the three, the three representatives that are there now, that are on this list now, those are the only three that recommended these or the, the past community members also recommended these folks?
Past community members who were, who were
In that position.
Who, who really currently are in that position until you approve a new membership. Yes, it was, it was, um, a quorum of the existing sex ed advisory board who made the recommendation.
Got it.
Good question. Three new students too. I forgot to mention one, I'm sorry. So.
We always had three?
We've always had three.
It reminded me of how the students were selected because they didn't take the survey.
Yeah, um, Becky Dawson, one of our high school counselors, um, works with interested students and gives parents permission for them to join and, uh, through her various leadership, uh, student groups.
Do they vote, do?
They are voting members. Any other questions on our membership?
So that membership list will be on consent agenda at next meeting for approval.
Good thinking, Ricky.
You do, thanks.
Next, over to the store five update.
So it's, uh, we're about halfway through our current strategic plan. It is the end of June. So we're about eighteen months in, um, a year from, uh, well, in January. Six months from now, we start the next cycle of getting ready for the, uh, source six, if you will. We want to give you just some quick updates on where we are with some of our, our short-term, long-term, and ongoing goals. With our anticipation of bringing, uh, really the culminating of all of them, uh, a year from now and maybe the next December is that here's what we've, we've got accomplished. Knowing that these are goals, uh, is our best chance to try to tackle them, but some are harder to tackle than others. Uh, but still doing the, doing the work behind them. So I'm going to start with curriculum and share a few of the goals that they've been working on the curriculum department. We'll go, kind of go around the room here and then just ask you any questions about each one.
So under short term on curriculum, a couple that I'll highlight. Uh, one is, the second goal listed under short term is improve parent communication regarding math and reading. Uh, standards and research-based instructional practices. In particular, with our new elementary math, uh, curriculum, there was, um, one of our priorities in year one was to ensure that we were sending home communication to parents if each unit. So teachers have access right in the Bridges curriculum to send home information about what are the strategies within math that your child is learning about and increasing that. Along with that, a couple of our, our elementary schools also posted math parent information events and then shared with other principals, this is how it went, this was the success that we had with that. And so I think some principals are contemplating, um, expanding that. So parents have an opportunity to come in and learn about math and how it looks a lot different than when, um, we were all taught math likely as current parents. So, uh, additionally, I would add on to that, that, uh, with the dyslexia legislation that I'm sure I will be sharing more and more with you in the coming months, um, that we also anticipate in, uh, a true opportunity to be able to share with families, um, all, not only what, how we are supporting students in that area of, uh, all the things that we've been doing. There's been some communication with supporting through multi-career systems of support and that communication, but even an expansion of further research and instructional strategies that are shifting and changing with classrooms in order to align the latest research and, and then now a dyslexia legislation as well. So, um, already some work, but I think there's some opportunity for us to continue to expand that, uh, as that legislation becomes more of a reality.
Amy, with the role of the math curriculum, looking back on the whole process, is there anything that surprised you or caused you pause about the, the, the whole process?
No, I, I don't think it caused pause. I think that, um, something that comes to my mind when you ask that question though, is that in year one, we had some very specific priorities. It, undertaking a new math curriculum rollout is a lot. It's a lot for teachers. It's especially when we want there to be really true change instructionally happening, not just pick up a new book type of thing. And so we set some clear priorities around a lesson a day, give the assessments. We're not going to get into interventions. We're not going to get into the million things that we could. And so we set some year one priorities. As we look to year two, uh, focused really around assessment and grading practices. And so I think the, the pause that kind of comes in my mind is, uh, the intentionality around, in year one, we're going to focus on these things. In year two, we're going to focus on these priorities. In year three, I envision that that will continue. It's not just a one-year rollout of support. Uh, but it's a multi-year approach to supporting teachers so that the changes are, uh, truly aligning with the research and the instructional practices, not just a new curriculum. But we're about a new curriculum. Everyone in the country would be using it and everyone would be knocking that out of the park. I believe that it's really about supporting teachers and increasing their knowledge and skill overall. And so that's then the intentionality behind it. So that's what comes to my mind when you ask that question.
Was there anything about this process that was different about any other rollouts that you did? And you anticipate using those things going forward?
I think a lot about this process was really successful, um, certainly with the math committee taking the time to do the research and develop some really core values and beliefs about what we want our classrooms to look like and sound like has been, um, kind of a continued revisit. And so I, I envision continuing to use some of those practices as well as, as being really clear with teachers. Like, we don't have to worry about all the things in this curriculum. Let's just focus on these things in year one. It's overwhelming enough, um, but narrowing that down, I think, was also helpful.
Okay.
And I'll say too, just as a parent of a second, you know, second grader or fourth grader, it was really good, at least in my experience, really good communication with parents around helping, helping us understand, you know, how this, how this changes things compared to what maybe we've been teaching our own kids at home. Uh, but in a very positive way. So I was, I was very impressed with, with, you know, the things that my kids were bringing home and the information that was shared from teachers. It was, it was definitely really positive. And then it helped, I think it helped too that my second grader, his teacher helped pilot the program. Um, and then my fourth grade teacher, she actually taught Bridges, Bridges, right?
Yes.
At a previous school before. So, so that maybe made, made it a little easier for me, but, um, very positive experience, so.
That's good to hear. Thanks for sharing.
Thank you.
Uh, also under short-term goals, expand alternative pa-, alternative, ah, alternative paths to graduation. We had twenty-two, uh, seniors graduating through our Eagle Plikes program this year, um, which is just a true success. We know that students typically would be leaving Hudsonville, going other places, not graduating at all. And that was really the goal and the intent is to take care of our Hudsonville students and ensure they can make it across the finish line. So, um, kind of an exciting update there. With regard to evaluating world language, um, that will actually, um, I will do a more formal presentation on that involved. There's some research and data that has been gathered and I'll share some updates with that in the fall. Under long-term, explore increased opportunities for struggling students. So that's been really under that umbrella of multi-career systems of support over the last few years. Um, we have increased elementary interventions that are research-based. Um, aside from the systems work, those are specific things that have been done. Uh, we are offering intervention classes at, in both ELA and math at the six, eight level, ensuring that students have access to foundational skills, reading, uh, and math, if they are lacking those. On top of their grade level math or ELA class, also, um, landing in a really good place with sustainable summer school and tutoring programs. Uh, as Mr. Briggs mentioned earlier, with the eleven T funds and some of the summer school that we used, uh, COVID funds for, those were quite large summer school programs. And I think we've really built something this summer that, um, is going to be sustainable longer term. And so feel good about that, kind of bridging the gap for students in the summer. And then last update under long-term, investigate increased opportunities for advanced learners. Um, we are going to be offering our first kind of return to Algebra One for eighth graders who qualify at both Baldwin and Riley this year, excuse me, in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. My brain is in two years. Um, and we, we entered into that process, uh, with wanting to identify some clear criteria for selection of those students, thinking we would have one section, um, in both middle schools. We will be offering two sections of Algebra One to eighth graders because of how they qualify. So that's really exciting.
Any other questions for Amy, for Alicia, here's?
Mrs. Armstrong.
Um, so I looked at, uh, my goals and I'm going to kind of group them for you because as we have been working on them, we've really, they're, they're layered and they just kind of overlap. So, um, the first goals I want to, um, kind of highlight are short-term, evaluate the K-12 processes to address the consistency and behavior response of discipline in order to determine appropriate levels of staffing. Um, layered with long-term, expand staff learning opportunities to empower staff around distorted practice and de-escalation practices when dealing with student discipline. And then one more layer in there that keeps coming up, um, when we discuss all these, is the ongoing goal of develop wellness practices for the adults who encounter or handle difficult situations during the school day. So when you look at our data under the human resources, um, goals, uh, discipline, uh, kind of kept, you know, coming up to the top and just what we're doing about behaviors and concerns, um, amongst students, staff, and community. So the first thing that we really dug into was, um, creating those common handbooks, um, and, and norming our discipline responses across the board because I think there, there was a lot of, well, my building does it great, but I hear over at, you know, X building, that's really, don't do it. Well, it's, we need to do something, right? And so I think that, you know, we started in the years just really educating parents. And so I think that, you know, we started in years just really educating parents and staff about the seven factors and within the seven factors that are state mandated and have been. Two things stand out as progressive discipline and restorative practices. And so that's where you see that layer of restorative practices. So we really, I would say there was a lot of intentionality with staff actions and conversations at the middle levels. And so you really, we really saw that rise at the five, six building in both where we involved a middle school. And then those consistent handbooks. The board, I know is going to approve the new true handbook for elementary, middle levels and high school. And so there's just a lot of intentionality, which then makes people realize, oh, it is handled the same way. I think the other piece of that was also with transportation and on buses. And so I think again, intentionality of educating what we expect and the outcomes and who handles that for, you know, building level consequences versus transportation level consequence or a combination of both. And because of that, we did use administrators like Bill Ross, you know, before Keith retired, to help with that norming. And then that has led into, as you know, we approved a new position with the assistant director and we hired intentionally with somebody with really strong behavior background. So very excited about that. We worked with student services and some of their goals, so don't mean to steal anything, but to ensure appropriate staff is getting training first and then reaching out to additional staff and really kind of naming who needs to be the trainer of trainers. And so that we can really empower our own staff to then further educate and further train in areas like CPI, restorative practices, blue envelope, which are all very important for not just our certified, but also our support staff to get. So I think that those continued conversations and continued training and professional development have really paid off with staff feeling more prepared to handle situations. And I think, I think that's where people just don't want to do something wrong. And the more we educate, the more clear they, they are. We've had continued conversations with administrators on how to help cover for staff in times when a break is needed after an event. We also in the human resources department, we're monitoring building data for any staff injuries when dealing with staff, student incidents and then responding appropriately through our EPA or just general check-ins, a little, you know, note cards saying, you know, like, you know, yesterday was really difficult. We hope that, you know, today's a better day. And those things go a really far way. Chocolate really helps. But also taking those accident, you know, our accident fund and data really seriously to see if we have enough staff to cover, you know, a situation. And then I would say, you know, I would, student services, our curriculum at tier one level and the business office, we really have monitored conversations that we've all had in different, with same people, but in different ways to ensure that we are meeting staff where, where they're at and empowering them to feel that they, you know, have to have the supports that they need. So I feel like there's been a lot of movement in these three goals that kind of layer on each other. So that's really exciting stuff. Any questions about that kind of area of student discipline and staffing?
The, the position that you added with the bus situation, what population was that for or who are you getting the most feedback from? Parents, students, teachers?
Right, I think that if you, if you look at our data from the original source, you know, five reports, I think that the community and parents were, you know, that's where they felt discipline was high or I would say behavior is high. But if you looked at the data and the reporting of the, of what in the reality, it, you know, it was similar to the rest of the, of the buildings. So I think that anytime that we can have a better turnaround in conversation, you know, quicker the turnaround and empowering even our drivers to be able to know what to say and when to say it is really important. So this next role is going, this next position is not only going to help with the building level consequences and with transportation, but also training our staff in the transportation department, but then also really working with families as well.
You know, one of the things that you mentioned was developing wellness practices for adults who encounter difficult situations. And I, I want to ask this question in, you know, in, in a way that elicits an answer, but also in a way that doesn't, you know, say that, that maybe people aren't as well prepared as they were in the past. But you, you, you see a difference in, in the level of people coming in able to handle difficult situations or not, you know, or, or, I mean, I, I used to work with people where someone could handle anything, yet another person was crushed by the, you know, and all different personalities, stuff like that. And I'm not just talking about one, you said, you see it in that, Amy?
I mean, I know exactly what you mean. And I think we all have capacities, you know, at different levels of what we find, you know, difficult. Not that, yeah, difficult. But I think that our colleges and universities are, are preparing, you know, young, young staff to come in and deal with, deal with difficult situations. I think sometimes our more seasoned veterans have a harder time transitioning with behavior because behavior used to be more compliant-based. And now we're seeing more explosive, you know? And so, and we could go down, we could all go down the rabbit hole of the lie, you know? And so that's not the reason for these goals. But no, I think people do have a capacity, you know? And I think there's people that don't and we coach them through that. But no more of just, I, I think things are happening at a, at a, at a regular, you know, situation where again, the student has de-escalated. The student is ready to come back. But if you're the caretaker of 30 kids, 25 kids, pack 10 kids, and you're not right, you haven't had a chance to de-escalate and, and, you know, regulate yourself. I think we're doing a better job now, having those conversations and how can we quick, allow that person to take a five-minute walk down the hallway? You know, allow that person to get a drink of water and then come back. And then have good, honest conversations on how we're going to handle this situation differently or the same, but just be prepared for it. And I, I think that idea of what is behavior is never going to be answered the same. Because what, I mean, even as parents, I'm sure, you know, what I expect from my boys, you know, might be a little tighter or a little looser than what, you know, Dawn thought of her kids, you know, reason them. And that's okay, but when you have a class full of students, you, we have to have norms. And so we teach to the norms.
How, how much of the hiring process, if any, is, is, is looking at that aspect of the individual to try to figure out, okay, I see this resume in front of me, but is there, is this person going to be able to, are there, are there things we're?
Yeah, that's a great question. And, you know, I, I, I don't just pull out, you know, questions every year and just use the same. We always kind of look at like what's rising to the top. And if you looked at interview questions, kind of from my predecessor's era to now, they're, they're very different where, you know, we, we start that round one with a lot more relationship-based questions, a lot more behavior-based questions, a lot more, how do you deal with this? I mean, four years ago, I never had to put a question about how do you deal with conflict between colleagues? And now I'm doing that, you know what I mean? So there's just, yes, we absolutely are trying to meet the needs of where we're at within our schools. And that's not different, but we're, we're not different than anybody else.
Very, very, thank you.
Yep. The next kind of grouping of goals that I just want to touch on, and I know we took a little bit longer, so I apologize, but I do really want to highlight this. Short-term, evaluate needs for expansion of building staff, mental health services. Short-term, analyzing use of state and federal funding to determine continued support for MTSS processes and ender students. And then long-term, evaluate staff needs around advance and accelerated student programming. And I just really want to acknowledge the work between the building administrators, the AKA, our cabinet, the Board of Education, that we did with the, with the design restructure this year with all the MTSS positions. That was a huge lift for all of us and I just thank you so much for all of that. That led to, you know, the positions of student support specialists, our additional ALC paras, student services facilitators, special education facilitator, director of teaching and learning, and then the instructional coaches realignment. Along with that, I think, you know, working with Amy's department and ensuring we have staffing for those like Algebra I classes that she just highlighted and ensuring that we're, we're really not just looking at that intervention, but also the, the question number four of PLSA, what do we do when they've mastered it? And so that's something that I'm really proud of that we did this year. And obviously it wasn't just a, you know, this year thing. Pat has done an excellent job of continuing to keep us all on the path of like, hey, this is coming. We have to realign. And so we did, and again, thank you, because I know that was a big, a big lift and stressful and, and everything. So I just, I really appreciate all of you for that. And then finally, I just want to highlight really fast the goal of long-term grow in-house options for students with career and tech, technology exploration courses by identifying with producer staff. I just want to say again, with partnership of curriculum, I feel like the FASO grant awards and how we can best use the monies to have all college, a career in college exploration is something that we really are digging into. We're leveraging new positions like the production manager that you guys just approved and we're really excited for that. We did some fun work today at, in the WCT studio. And then just continued discussion amongst all of us, but especially within Amy's department about career pathways and where we want to go from there with CD. So just acknowledge that as well.
You know, I want to, I want to just bring up the whole MTSS discussion and the processes and all those types of things. And I think that was a very healthy discussion that we had between the board and the administration about, you know, so maybe some process things and stuff. And I, I want to thank the board members who were involved in that for presenting things in a way that was not combative or accusatory or anything. And I want to thank the administration for the way that that was accepted and maybe some things were done a little bit differently. But I think that was a, it was a very good dynamic to work with. And I want to thank the board for that, for that.
Any other questions for Ann?
Great. One of the goals that I thought I would touch on is under that ongoing column that talks about expanding alternative education and alternative paths to graduation. I know that Amy spoke to the alternative path program. But in terms of paths, really the main vehicle that we have in Michigan to explore that is called personal curriculum. So just as a high-level overview, about half of the states in the country have multiple diplomas. And so they might have an advanced option, a basic option, maybe a one that's more career-focused than higher academia. But in Michigan, we have one diploma. And so that leads us to meet both the Michigan merit curriculum as well as any expectations the local board makes that. And so in the realm of personal curriculum, we have that as an option to change those requirements, those 18 credit requirements that Michigan lays out if the student has transferred during their high school career. If the student is looking to accelerate, so let's say they're ready to explore college level courses and they're looking to exchange maybe a visual component arts or another accelerated course. But the main reason we use personal curriculum is for students with IEPs who for disability-related reasons are looking to make changes so that it both aligns with capabilities and skills and strengths as well as the whole sector again. This has been a murky water for a long, long time. But in 2022, the state representative had come to our ISD and spoke with our local teams about the intent and the push to see that vehicle use more because our graduation rates among students with disabilities continue to be lower than in other states. So I mean, keep in mind, it's not always apples to apples because when you have three different diplomas to pursue in one state, you know, one diploma to pursue in Michigan, that can change the landscape. But nevertheless, they really pressed upon us to look at our graduation data among students with IEPs and to see what local processes and changes we can make to increase our participation rates or our percentage of students with IEPs earning a diploma. And so one of the major pieces that we've worked with is students that maybe have historically needed to pursue a certificate of completion versus a diploma because of the level of severity of their disability is, in what ways might we use a personal curriculum to establish, yes, that they are graduating with functional literacy and math skills, but that they also are prepared to enter the workforce and have rigorous coursework that's going to help them get to that point. So since that time, we have developed our own procedures and documents and have begun to use those, that process more. I know really shaping more policy in 2024 helped us kind of give a baseline for what that looks like, which has been really helpful. And so now that that's been implemented, it's really opened our eyes to where within our coursework can we also fill in some of the life skills works that historically students would only experience if they were in a categorical course. But this is things like preparing for a budget or how to interview or how to prepare for, you know, going to the DMV and all of these experiences is that we do have a number of our learners that don't have a contract for a minute, but continue to meet both academic challenges as well as supplemental instruction around all the areas that will help them be a competent learning member and participate in the workforce. So we continue to monitor our numbers. Most, so the state always sets the target of having at least 70% of your students with IEPs earn a diploma. In most years, we have met that target. I'm happy to say that this past school, we did. But it's been variable and it's something that I think as a high school student, we really want to see being more consistent and an area where we'd like to really show leadership in the county just because of the time and investment we've had in that process. And I'm, I'm just really proud of the work that our team leads have done around that because these are all individual conversations that at the same time are quite meaningful. While we're talking about whether a student with a disability will earn a diploma or not because we know that the life outcomes that are attached to the diploma are so significant. Another area that I thought I would touch on is.
Amy, Amy, Amanda, before you go further, Amy had mentioned 22 students graduated that hadn't graduated before. Were any of the students that you're talking about in that population or the?
No, different population.
Okay, okay.
The second goal that I wanted to touch on is also an ongoing column that talks about exploring and enhancing teacher resources, training and clarity of processes. Something that we continue to work towards, not just in special education, but in all spaces, is how we continue to move forward in terms of our inclusive practices for all learners. And research continues to tell us that students with disabilities succeed from home when they can receive the services and support that they need within the classroom with their con disabled peers. And so that's quite different from older models of special education where you went to a different place or a different teacher to get the support you needed and came back to the general class and both that it all rolled together. And so one of the roles that I'm really excited for one of these new positions, the special ed facilitator, is to really support the practice of co-teaching. Co-teaching has been around for a really long time, but in more recent years, I think there's been more intentional research on how to make that model sustainable because in past years, it's been really more personality-dependent in terms of are these two teachers good as coworkers rather than is this simple teaching model that's sustainable regardless of the individual that's in that role? And so we have, we're doing this alongside our multilingual learner program.
And so we have, we're doing this alongside our multilingual learner program that also sees the benefit of co-teaching. And so we're involving our ISD consultants in that. We're also having people tender as PD around the state to make sure that we're using the most current research, research and tools around that. But I think that where we have really a soft spot is we have really amazing partners and teachers that have worked together for many years that are actually the first volunteers saying, yes, I'm ready to do this, I want to do this. And so I'm excited for that to really launch next fall. We're going to take it slow and kind of evaluate what are the successes and challenges. So it's not a complete departure in how we do all things, but it's an additional way that we can support students in the classes that they're in from there. So that is-
Is the point maybe, expand on the co-teaching.
Yeah.
Is the point, additional, expanding the skill, expanding skills through having co-teachers with different skill sets to address the needs of students? Is it, is it driven, I mean, there's, you know, co-teacher, or we call it, teachers at share, right?
Yeah.
But can you, can you talk about the, what's the why behind that a little bit?
Yeah. At the secondary level, this is usually seen as there is a general education teacher who's the content expert, especially at the secondary level. We are very, have a sense of knowledge of the content of teaching. And you see the special education teachers fall as the expert in learning modalities, differentiation, accommodation, and making modifications when necessary. And so what can happen is when those two services are offered separately, the connection for the student is missing. And so the co-teaching model is that when you have the two teachers with a different , the different areas of expertise, they can plan together and deliver instruction together, all students in that class and them, but not just the students with IEPs. And so when there is not a lot of structure to co-teaching, what can happen is you've got one main teacher with one person more assisting rather than teaching. With a true co-teaching model, you have planned intervals of how that co-teaching can really flow so that the students see both adults as both of the four teachers. I think, I can think of several examples where that's been beautiful and neat, and some of that came just from their natural spark and seeing the possibilities there. And I think that what our desire is to say is we want to be able to support the teachers in that as much as possible, so there's less time kind of figuring it out and more time just being able to implement that in stages so that both people here feel very confident in their roles. And the benefit to the student is that they're receiving in-time, like, just-in-time support as the, as the instruction is occurring rather than kind of a delayed support in another class by another teacher.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mrs. Craig. Thank you. So in brands and operations, it's, it's a, it's a big tent. Those, those who do the set with us when we develop these goals, Jeff Smucker, our technology director, very involved, Trollius, Curie, Learns and Facilities, and Rob Matthews, they're, they're all extremely involved in these goals. And then just with our bond process, and we, spoiler alert, spoilers here, but you'll see a lot of these things as we talk about the next, something else later on the agenda. But whether or not we, the goal number one in the short term, whether or not we explored it or not, parents wanted us to look at air conditioning. So that's been, we heard, we've heard that loud and clear for ever since the, I would say, the, the big times of COVID, air conditioning really got to be a concern. We've also increased, second goal in the short term, we increased the number of cameras dramatically, specifically in the elementaries. We had a pretty good, we had pretty good coverage in our secondary buildings before this group, and we've, we've built that out in the elementaries. The fourth goal there in the short term, Ann, Ann talked about it from the standpoint of adding that staff, that staff member with that assistant director, but that not only is going to help us with student discipline, but that helps in so many other ways because there's been a data point in, I think it's SOAR one, where we, the district has been criticized for inconsistent discipline in transportation. We've tracked that. And so that's, that's a goal to, to shore that up and at least communicate, as Ann said, communicate better with parents and, and students why, what the reason for their discipline is. But it also is tough on the drivers when there isn't, like, if something happens on the bus, we have cameras now, but it's, it's not easy to get to it, especially when things are piling up. So we've got another, we've got another adult, another managing leader in the department to, to work that and get things corrected because really, the discipline on the bus is mostly about safety. You know, you gotta get, we'll, we'll let a lot go, but you gotta sit down, you know, and be safe. So it's, it's going to help there, and that helps retain, with this last goal, helps retain drivers. It really does. And the other thing that the board has supported, again tonight, you've helped us with our compensation benefits. So that'll, that'll help with retention and attraction, and attracting drivers. So another goal of that position, we talked about it in the interviews, is you're going to see a lot of new ways to recruit drivers. So we're really, we're really, really going after increasing transportation staff. We've, we've worked, we're working right now with the, it's part, it's part of facilities study, but when we survey parents, that's, I'm ancillary to that process, but the, the surveys we're doing is, is part of the facilities, studying their facilities. And then I, I always give a shameless plug, the ongoing category for conservative budgeting practices. It's served this district very well. It's, it's sometimes we've had, it's not as big a deal anymore to keep it in there, but there were several years when we felt we were done. We don't need to have this, as an ongoing goal anymore, but with your support, you can put it in there. So, yeah, I know I went through those quickly, but we've, we're working, working a lot of the other ones too, but those are the highlights.
Questions for Pat?
You can never get enough of the five year transformation goals. You just can't.
You'll notice it's the fewest number of goals we have in our strategic planning, but that's okay. I'm going to close, let's, let's give a co-curricular, just go through a couple things. In short term, the second one, a lot, a career technical, Amy talked a little bit about this, the expansion of the high school needs, a lot of focus on career and technical at the high school, but also the work we've done from a district standpoint with the tech center. Now there's a third session for kids, which opened up a lot of opportunities that we didn't have before. They've done some renovations over at their facility, so now instead of having eighty kids on a waitlist for welding, we can get a lot more kids in. So that's helping tremendously from now and the push that we've had from a district standpoint with our fellow districts also. And we're going to talk a little bit more about career tech in a few minutes when we talk about bond planning also. On short term, number three, co-curricular needs for students with special needs. I just want to throw this out, we are having conversations preliminary, we've, you've talked, you've seen Eagle Law and the, the kids that performed, which is amazing, they've gone to Chicago, they've been at sporting events, they've been, you've seen them before. We're now starting to explore taking them to Europe to perform, which is pretty neat. So we've, preliminary conversations have just started at the end of the year, so we'll see if we can get that ship out of board, those that. Under long-term, number two, a value we need for providing summer program and tutoring for non-qualified students. Amy talked about this already, that, you know, we talked about tutoring not just something that is federally funded, but something that's sustainable because we know there are kids that need support throughout the year. So it's not just a, a special population, but trying to expand that to populations that need that support, so we'll be working on that. We feel like this summer is a good, a good opportunity to explore doing something that would be sustainable for years to come. And then last but not least, number, I'm going to look at ongoing goal number one, district's current facilities and identify potential needs for additional all-weather spaces. We'll talk about that in the discussion we'll have in a few minutes here regarding bond. So it's a quick update on some of the co-curricular goals. I do want to thank Rebecca Fabiano, which happens to be here subbing for Robin tonight, doing a phenomenal job, but she also drives a lot of this ship along with our athletic directors and our middle school athletic directors. The co-curricular aspect is not just athletics, there's just opportunity for kids. You saw that in the summer programs taking place, the conversations that even Rebecca and I had earlier today about lacrosse camp at six PM in a fairly warm day, the entrance is hydrate, get them out there. Let's go. So we're working on that. So I do want to thank Rebecca, she, she does an amazing job, and you don't get to see it firsthand, we do. So, thank you, Rebecca. Any questions? Thanks to, I'm going to start, can I go onto my goals? So it's a mid-year review for my goals. This is, I'm in the middle of an evaluation year, so the board will start to get information when we start the school year back up for the evaluation timeline. The expectation is that I'll go through a formal review and then it'll be finished before we get to the end of the calendar year. So this is a mid-year review. These goals were established back in the beginning of the year, so you had an idea of where we were. I will be very clear that I have four goals, and they're also four assistant superintendents, so they fall under each category. And as much as they are my goals, they are, they do the work really to support this work at a district level. So I'm going to start with the enhancing academic assessment performance. One of the keys there is just involvement in what takes place from an assessment standpoint. We spent a lot of work looking at the data, the principals are looking at the data, we've been sharing that with the board and the, no, what's the one sheet?
Oh, yes.
The stratus, the- Stat, the stat, status, whatever, the eagle. The stratus on the game.
The one page.
The dashboard. The dashboard, thanks. So you'll get, you'll continue to get those as we get back into the school year. Now we'll have some additional data, so you'll be well informed in that. We've also spent a lot of time with our building principals regarding a lot of the data that goes through school improvement. So that school improvement data that we have with our iStudent voice survey, which the board will get a review of that in the July work session. And then our principals come back in August as part of our retreat. That's when we spend a lot of time looking at that data and then taking it because it draws directly to school improvement and district improvement. So that all comes through assessment. So that's, that comes up in, so. Goal number two, district reorganization. As you well know, we spent a lot of time reorganizing, and it's really the, the last key component to try to not just evaluate what we've done, which we'll continue to do in the fall, but then to look at our organizational chart to make sure the right people are reporting to the right people, and there's that correct chart. We've done some shifting, not only from our office, but from a district standpoint of who reports to who with the MTSS structure. So that's the reorganization that we just want to make sure the organizational chart follows with what our expectation, our expectation is from the people at the building, to the people at the district, to the people in central office, and then to the superintendent.
Do we anticipate on that particular issue, having some sort of a informal conversation or assessment as to how staff felt a year from now after working through some of these changes?
Yeah, I think the answer is absolutely. We do want to make sure we get feedback. I think our initial feedback, even as informal, will be from our building principals to how that structure is working in their environments. They'll tell us, even if we don't ask. So I, I do think that's going to be the first, the first step. They have now somebody in their building alongside them that will spend more time communicating with parents, doing discipline work, working with staff. Before it was its own, it felt under teacher contracts, was a little bit different. Now they'll have that, I'm not going to say an assistant principal, but they'll truly have an assistant that they're working with, and so they'll be a good indicator of, is this working? And I don't think the answer is or not, but is this working and what do we need to adjust so that it can work better for them and their environments? And as much as we want consistency, which we really strive for, we'll talk about that in our handbook conversation next month in July, because we, we no longer have a Bauer elementary handbook, with an elementary handbook that has Bauer elementary information in it, but also has Park Elementary information. We don't have a Riley handbook anymore. We have a middle school handbook that has Baldwin and Riley information in it. That even starts with a consistency standpoint. But to that point, every building is different when it comes to building leader and their support person in what's at your front. So I think that's the first informal conversation we'll have with our principals, and then eventually we do want to ask questions of our staff. It might come in our strategic planning survey ten months from now, but that might be a good indicator. I just don't want to ask too quickly without seeing how we can work some of the, there will be some, yeah, there might be, so we want to work through them. And not just say, we don't want to plow through it, but we want to support. Looking at goal number three, the diversity advocacy, I do want to thank the board and their support as we work through. I want to thank Mrs. Thomas and all the work she does helping to lead that. I mean, that's been a, that's been a journey for several years, and I think we're in a good spot. Hopefully, we'll, we'll revisit this with the high school in the fall. We will be revisiting with the high school in the fall and bring back lessons to the board once the high school has a chance to revisit what K eight is doing. And the good thing is, is the work with K eight, they won't get those kids for at least another year, so we have time to get that implemented at the high school. But I think that's in a much better spot. I, I do, we do have surveys that we want to administer to our exited students that will take place once we know they're exited in the fall. So traditionally, we do that in September and October to get feedback on what their situation is, why they left the district. Is it bullying? Is it job transfer? Is it economics? What are the reasons? And we, we've done that for the last couple of years, and it's a good indicator, you know, and we get good feedback from some parents and others. It's not great return rate on the surveys. If we have eight families that leave for whatever reason, we might get fifteen to twenty responses, but at least it's some feedback. And then last but not least, the facilities planning. We spent a lot of time over the last several months, and I'll explain that in a few minutes. We're in the middle still of looking at feasibility studies, which I'll talk about, but we've engaged community members, parents, staff, administration, students will start to get involved once we get a little bit deeper into this process, and I'll explain why in a few minutes. So I think we're, I think, I feel like I'm in a good place regarding these goals. They've been addressed, we've been working on them. I feel the same way about our strategic plan. There's not a plan that we have printed and put on the shelf and said, okay, we'll bring this back in three years. I feel like we consistently have conversations about all four of these goals as well of, as well as the strategic planning goals, but we can keep working on it. Any questions?
Yeah, I want to, I just want to commend Dr. Vanderjack. I, I think that we have conversations, several conversations a week. I'm, I'm in a situation where I don't have a, a very hectic job like Dr. Hooper did, so it's easy to talk at different times of day and stuff like that, but I just want to commend the administration for, for being open and, and listening, and hopefully that can continue as we move forward. Any, any of the other members? Thank you, Dr. Vanderjack.
Thanks.
Let's see. Now, we have focused group findings.
Yeah. Let's see if I can figure this out. There we go. All right. One of the conversations that continually happens whenever you have a bond project of roughly a hundred and forty million dollars and it's starting to wind down, Park Elementary will be ready to open up in a, in a month and a half or so. Yeah, school starts two months from a couple days ago. So, so they'll be ready to open up. We're finishing up some odds and ends throughout the district. It's, it's really come together nicely. A lot of it has to do with three key people that are in this room outside of the work the board's done, but under Pat's leadership when it comes to all the bond, the facilities planning. We also have Adam Tudy behind you from OAK. He's sitting down, Andrew, he thinks there's two people that are stopping his name. And then Jeff Hoyt, they've been instrumental in, in really planning what's next for Hudsonville. So we started having these conversations several months ago. We've met at a regular basis to say, what is next? We have quite the timeline to bring to the board and prepare something for the board. So I'm going to talk about just trying to gather information from our community and from our staff of what are topics that they feel- from our staff of what are topics that they feel, what are ideas, what are things that need to be addressed as a district standpoint? I'm going to be very transparent. The list of asks probably exceeded a little over at least a billion dollars, maybe three quarters of a billion dollars. We do not have that tax base, as Pat referenced earlier, to generate that kind of money. So it's, what are priorities? And how do we prioritize? We are not to the point of prioritizing yet. Right now it was just, let's make a list. And so here are some highlights of the list. I'll just give you what the goal was, I took, like, talked about the themes and the potential areas. I held six focus groups. We had four with community members, I had two with staff. The staff ones lasted a little over an hour, the community ones lasted between ninety minutes and two hours. And some people cut and just stayed and wanted to talk more about their personal situation. We tried to stay away from what personally affects you, you know, somebody wanted more buses because I want my kid picked up in my driveway. Okay, those are operational things that we can address that don't have to be in a bond issue either. So we have great conversations. And then we, I took all the things, we put it together, there's a laundry list, and then we generated what are some of the most popular. Based on the temperature today, I can tell you the number one thing was air conditioning, right? The challenge with air conditioning, I'm going to be honest with you, we don't vote in June, July, or August, or even September. We vote in either February, I'm sorry, either May, or in, in November. So we have to, that, that could play a role. We can have a snow day the day of the election, if it's November, right? You just don't know. But that was the most frequent request of possible buildings. Other requests were accessible playgrounds to address the playground needs at all of our buildings. Park will look really nice, it'll be in good shape. We've done, we've done some work at Bauer. We've done some work at other buildings, but they all, that was a number, one of the number one topics, we'll talk playground needs. Updated furniture, flexible spaces. They see the flexible spaces that we now have at the high school connector. They see the flexible spaces at the five-six building, like, what about us? What can we do in some of our buildings? And, and we'll have to think outside the box when it comes to brick and mortar because we can't just add a cubicle in the middle of a hallway. But more and more, the, the opportunity to work with kids in small group instruction is no longer in the hallway, like when I was at school. It's, it's now in these, these areas that they can work. And our ancillary staff looks different than it did years ago. You know, we have a lot more staff now working with kids on a daily basis, so. The furniture also is, some of it's old. I know at Baldwin Middle School, it's pushing thirty years plus.
Yes.
At Baldwin Middle School. And so looking at that, a south side five-six building, which from our standpoint really addresses the consistency from a curriculum standpoint. We still have conversations about, well, on the north side it looks like this, the south side looks like this. We've had data conversations from a testing standpoint on how sixth grade math scores look different on the north side than they do on the south side, because those sixth graders were in that building for their second year, and our sixth graders on the south side, it's their first year in the building. So we're seeing some differences in assessment scores also. So trying to, is that, is that valid or not? I don't know, we've had, we have one year to look at it, but it's something that, it is a lot easier if we can say, hey, listen, kids out of fifth grade and sixth grade in the same structure on both sides of the district. So that was a, a need also. Early childhood centers, we've had a lot of conversations about early childhood center. We have a beautiful location for early childhood center, but it is quite dated. That building has been a ninth grade building. It's been an early childhood center. Before that, it was a middle school. So what is, it was a high school, I mean, it's, is that, we had a high school?
Okay. No, that was my parents.
Your parents are high school then? I know it's a while, I didn't, I didn't know how, I honestly didn't.
I went to middle school there.
Middle school, okay, so you went to middle school there. So it's been a, a lot of different buildings. So the conversation was about, do we look at the early childhood center and say, what if we put an early childhood center on the north part of the district and on the south part of the district? We have land in both, to put them on, I'll say on the, I'll say on the Georgetown campus and on the Jamestown campus. And then do we look at the early childhood center and potentially repurpose it to more of a career and technical education field? So you would have opportunities for your kids to go there versus going to the tech center, or kids from neighboring districts could come here also and take a small engine repair, or the nursing program they have at the tech center, or welding, or what can that look like? So that was a, that, people were very interested in that.
How prevalent is that model? Is it used at all in the state?
Which, which model?
Where a school in Hudsonville would attract Grandville and-
It happens, it happens all over, for schools that have programs that people want to go to. I know in Kent County, they've done more of that because of the distance to get to the tech center. If I were in a district like a West Ottawa or maybe a Zeeland, it might not-